Good morning. Beautiful day on the Outer Banks. Welcome to the Monday, March 7th, Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call forward Reverend Gay Morris for an invocation. Reverend Morris, good to see you this morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's good to be here. And we, on this beautiful morning, gather on the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Algonquian and Iroquoian tribal peoples who hunted and fished along the ocean waters from Carolla to Hatteras and who farmed and lived in the forested soundside of the Outer Banks. And I'm honored to invite you to join in prayer in the presence of the holy and infinite source of love, mercy, justice, and compassion. God of many names, move in us as we care for and about this county, that this may more perfectly be a place for all to live and work in safety and loving kindness. Work through us in justice to remember those in our community who are vulnerable and voiceless. May we help each other to make a reality of the possibilities we dream, to do our best to create the community we desire, to practice the truth as we know it, and to serve with wisdom. May we be the ones who make it so. Blessed be, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Morris. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. When I became chairman of Dare County Board of Commissioners some seven years ago, I added an item to the agenda called "Opening Remarks," Chairman's Update. Typically, this was to recognize folks in our community who has done good work. It's also recognize those in our community who have passed away. It's also comments about what's taking place in our community, projects that Dare County have going on, and a multitude of other items. I only have one item that I'd like to address this morning, that I'd like to share with you today. Nothing in the past seven years that I've sat up here and spoke to you about under Chairman's comments will compare to what I'm about to say to you this morning. As all of you know, on February the 24th, President Putin launched a full-scale invasion of Ukraine. By his actions, Putin plunged Europe into its darkest time since World War II. This was a terrible day for the Ukrainians and a dark day for all of Europe and the world. Putin's invasion of Ukraine is an unprovoked attack with no justification whatsoever, and it's incumbent on all nations to ensure that President Putin and his government are met with severe consequences. President Putin does not get to decide the borders of a free and sovereign nation, country. Why would you want to kill your neighbors in Ukraine who are innocent and just want to have the opportunity to lead their lives as they see fit? This morning, as we continue to watch the news of war in Europe unfold, President Putin must stop this atrocity and these war crimes. He must, for the sake of humanity, the entire world is watching you, President Putin. My heart is heavy. I'm sure yours is as well. Watching what the Ukrainian people are experiencing, I condemn in the strongest possible terms this unlawful military action by Russian President Putin, which will doubtably, undoubtedly lead to profound human loss and suffering. Let me take this, let me take just a moment to commend the brave leadership of Ukraine President Volodymyr Zelensky. His defiance in the face of evil is what leads free countries and societies through difficult and dark days like Ukraine is experiencing right now. When it was suggested to him that the West would like to help him and find a way to escape, his response was, "I need ammunition, not a ride." This has been the rallying, rallying cry of not only for the people of Ukraine but around the world. The United States of America and its citizens are the beacon of hope, of opportunity, of prosperity to the rest of the world because our freedom's here at home and we depend on our allies around the world who also treasure freedom. I'm reminded of two quotes from U.S. presidents. One is from a Republican and one is from a Democrat. The Democrat, John F. Kennedy, these are words that he never actually spoke, but he wrote them down. And it was from a speech that he meant to have given on the afternoon that he was assassinated in Dallas, Texas. He was to say, at this time in this country, in this generation, we are by destiny rather than choice, the watchman on the walls of the world freedom. We are the watchman on the walls of world freedom. President Kennedy was right. Just as he stood up to the Cuban Missile Crisis, he understood that by destiny rather than choice, it is up to us. President Ronald Reagan famously said that you get peace through strength. That is one of the great truisms of our last couple of decades in our country, that we must have strong military if we want to have peace, because only by the projection of force can we ensure that we can keep the peace around the world. He also said, "We not only, we know only too well that war comes not when the forces of freedom are strong, but when they are weak. It is then that tyrants are tempted." I'm reminded of the creed of the U.S. Junior Chamber of Commerce when I was president of the, of the, of the Virginia J.C.'s and vice president of the United States Junior Chamber of Commerce. Six points in our creed read, "That faith in God gives meaning and purpose to human life; that the brotherhood of men transcends the sovereignty of nations; that economic justice can best be won by free men through free enterprise; that government should be of laws rather than of men; that earth's great treasure lies in human personality; and that service to humanity is the best work of life." In closing, I can't help but to continue to be upset, quite honestly distressed, troubled, unsettled, and heartbroken is what I see on the national news. Several days ago, and this is one of many, many, many whom I've, that I've seen and I know you've seen, that I saw a mother and her daughter, she looked to be about three years old. They were boarding a train in the capital of Ukraine in order to get out of the, of the city. They made their way to a window on the train. They sat down, and the little girl pressed her hands on the window of the train and her face cheeked to the window of the train. You could, you could read her lips as she was saying, "Papa." Her mother tried to comfort her. I broke down, to be honest with you. It broke my heart. I ask you to please continue to pray for this mother and this daughter and the father, father that was left behind to fight. What I'm about to say right now, I make no apology. Let me repeat, I make no apology. Finally, President Putin, let there be no doubt, you will burn forever in hell you are creating for yourself by your immoral and criminal actions. May God bless the Ukrainian people and freedom lovers around the world who are supporting them in this hour of need. I would ask if you would stand with me in a moment of silence out of respect for the Ukrainian people. Chairman, I mean, county manager, that completes Chairman's comments for March 7th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That breaks us to item two on the agenda, and this is the county service pins. This morning, we'll be recognizing three individuals, and first, we have Natalie Matusko, who will receive in her tenure pin from Wendy Hall.
Welcome this morning, ladies.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. It's our pleasure to be here, and I thank you for this opportunity to recognize our county employees. This morning, we have Natalie. She started with the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services back in 2012 as a field nurse with Home, Health, and Hospice. She came from the emergency room environment and quickly adjusted to traveling to patients' homes and helping them manage their own health care. She is detail-oriented and patient-focused, and has proved herself time and time again to be an excellent teacher and a case manager. During her tenure with Home, Health, and Hospice, she became the lead school nurse for the hosp, or the lead nurse, my past of school health, I can't get, she became the lead nurse for the hospice program, and as you know, hospice is a very difficult program. And once again, she proved herself to be patient-focused and able to deal with families at all points along their journey. The journey of hospice can be very difficult. She accepted the challenge of being the supervisor with Home, Health, and Hospice. She learned the ins and outs of personnel management, quality assurance, chart reviews, and staffing shortages. When problems came up, she met them face-on. She did not back away from dealing with any issues, whether that be good or bad. Her goal was to work together to get the job done in the best way possible for the best patient outcome and experience. She is always interested in learning new nursing skills and growing to improve her professional knowledge. She completed her baccalaureate degree while working full-time, balancing work, life, and school. Always up for learning something new and taking on the new experience, she accepted the position with the Public Health Clinic Division, our division, last year, and that has reinforced that she can be a multitasker and is in the profession to help people by being part of a patient-focused team. She took on one of the most difficult programs within the Health Department during the time of COVID. She's our communicable disease nurse. The position was vacant for a while, and she was the only one with the perseverance and the strength and the dedication to take on such a difficult role at a difficult time. If you need a nurse to meet a patient where they are, where they live, to address their needs, to teach them how to be in their best health, to organize a team, and to be an amazing coworker, Natalie's the person. She's been with us for a short time, but she has proved herself time and time again. She is truly a part of an amazing team, so we are so thankful to have you. So here is your hand. Thank you.
Next, Sally Defosse, she's here as the Assistant Finance Director, and she's receiving her 20-year pin from Dave Clawson.
Dave, good morning.
Good morning.
Sally!
She's smiling because I've never been less prepared than I have been for this because I found out about 10 minutes ago. It's probably my fault. So, you all know Sally. I mean, I don't know if you know, but she graduated UNC Wilmington, lives in Wanches, with Brian and her son Liam. She did some amazing work things before she came to the county. She, she's worked in an accounting firm. She worked in a large multinational company in Germany. Turned down Arthur Andersen. I don't think she wanted to, but...
But I wanted to come home, too.
I can remember sitting in New Bern in a continuing ed class and asking Sally if she'd be interested in our job, and three months later, she, she was here. She knows more, I'm not trying to insult anybody, but she knows more than anybody here. She makes, she makes everything work. If you need to know something, a lot of times I'll tell Bobby, say, "I gotta talk to Sally." That's usually the answer.
I contest to that. That is a true statement.
But honestly, if it's banking or purchasing or, not just our software, all software in any department and how it interacts and ties into the financial software, our receipt and payment and receipt processing systems, the budget, the annual audit report, she coordinates and is in charge of everything for the audit. And, and our software company, Tyler, we, Dare County's name's been on their client advisory board. We're starting our second or third time as a Tyler reference site where they can bring people, you know, have people talk to us about their software and what, how things work or not. And we get free stuff and discounted stuff and hours of implementation reviews and things like that, and they don't want me, they want Sally. So she does all that, so, sorry. So I'm just gonna say thank you, and I'm a lucky person.
Thank you, Dave.
Next, we have Robin Etheridge, our Land Records Manager. She's receiving her 35-year pin from Hosey Wilson.
Thirty-five, that's quite an accomplishment. It's quite an honor I have this morning to present Robin her 35-year pin. I really don't feel very deserving of it, seeing that she's served three and a half decades, and I've been in Dare County for seven years. But I'm gonna do the best I can. I've been preparing for a while, and I've enlisted some other assistants from my staff and friends and from Robin as well. That's a tenure, a tenure of that magnitude is just really a true demonstration of character. You know, it shows to me, Robin has a great desire to learn, to teach. She obviously loves what she does. It's just a profession that she holds to a very high standard. And the seven years I've worked with Robin, I can honestly say it's certainly been my pleasure because I, one thing, Robin manages her department very well, and I don't have to spend a lot of time and effort wondering if everything is going like it's supposed to, because there is no question in my mind that it is. So Robin started her career in March of 1987. She started in the revaluation department as a tax clerk one. After a year in 1988, she moved to tax mapping, and in 1989, she began, she became a property mapper one. At that point, I assumed that she was hooked. So in July of 2012, she was promoted to her current position after her predecessor retired after, I believe, 36 years, so you've got little ways to go. And just so you know, Robin is responsible for maintaining all real property ownership and parcel record data in the county. So any recorded changes that come out of the Register of Deeds office, and as you can imagine, they're all types, and very many of them, especially in the last few years. So I would argue that this is the most sensitive data in the county, and it's critical that it is accurate. Otherwise, we can have major problems, and we don't. Robin has been involved in the North Carolina Property Mappers Association for 30-plus years. She's served on the Land Records Advisory Board and Task Force, the Local Government Legislative Committee. She's an instructor for the Education Committee, so she teaches in her spare time, whatever that is. She is, she was the certifications records manager, which means she made sure that everybody in that association was getting the education they were supposed to get and required to get annually. This obviously was important to Robin because she brought this to me to make sure that I included it in today's narrative. She's a recipient of both the Old Timers Award and the Plum Bob Award, both of which I have no idea what that entails, but I can guarantee you that they just don't give it to anybody. In 2016, she was awarded the Mapper of the Year with the Association, so that is quite a big deal. And this kind of speaks to her desire to learn. I had been somewhat pushing her to learn more about real property appraisal, and this year in August, she received her certification as a Real Property Appraiser One through Department of Revenue. So in, in my profession, I know quite a few mappers, and I've been in other counties, so I have some experience there, and I can, I can tell you for certain that Robin is held in very high regard across the state. And I would argue that she is probably one of the top, if not the top, land records professionals in the state of North Carolina. My experience with Robin has been somewhat limited, so like I said, I've enlisted some of our staff. So I'm just gonna read a few things that they said. "Robin is a very caring and thoughtful individual. I feel blessed to have her as a coworker. I am appreciative of her knowledge and willingness to help. Even though I'm not in her department, she always takes the time to explain when I have land records-type questions or need assistance. Robin is intentional about what she does and says to coworkers. She always demonstrates, demonstrates that she cares for them as individuals and not just as coworkers. Robin shows an interest and concern for our well-being and development and lets us know that our ideas are valued, our differences matter, and all we add value by being a Dare County government employee." Robin takes great pride in her work in preserving land record documents for the future. She also makes helping taxpayers and showing appreciation for her employees a priority. So I reached out to my predecessor, Greta, who worked with Robin for about 30 years of her 35, and Greta submitted a brief statement that I will read. It says, "I discovered a few things in the 30 years I've known and worked with Robin. She has a youthful spirit, a keen wit, and her own special sense of humor, and she loves to shop. Besides all that, Robin is a tirelessly dedicated public servant. She serves us all by never giving up in her pursuit of the answer to every problem she is given, and she continues to take on new challenges day after day. She loves to learn and has never stopped learning." This Albert Schweitzer quote says it all about Robin. "Success is not the key to happiness; happiness is the key to success. If you love what you're doing, you will be successful," and kudos to Robin for her very successful 35 years with the county. So I think all those statements characterize Robin and her importance in our department. Couple of funny stories that involve me, that are relatively recent. About a month ago, Terry Wheeler came in, and Terry was looking for a map, and he came looking for me first, and this map was from sometime in the 70s, and it has something to do with the road here in Manio, and it's, he found Robin before he found me because I was not in my office at the time. And it's a good thing he did, because Terry would probably still be waiting in the office right now on that map that it took Robin about 10 minutes to produce. And while Terry was in there, he said, "Robin, I thought you retired." And I said, "Hold on a minute, Terry. We don't talk about those things in this office." So that's a true story. In conclusion, the Orson Welles movie Citizen Kane, I'm not a big, I mean, I can't really say much about the movie, except there's a quote in there or a line from that movie, and, and I use it, and it is really pertinent with Robin. It's, "Robin knows where all the bodies are buried." And that's not meant to be literal, but in this case, it is, because she knows where all the cemeteries in Dare County are, and she knows who's buried it. So that's about it for my remarks. I would ask for another 35, but we're willing to take whatever you'll give. And I'm gonna change it up a little bit. I think after 35, Robin deserves the podium. I think after 35, Robin deserves the podium to, to say a few words if she would like to do so.
Absolutely.
So congratulations. I got a pin here for you.
Well, I figured after 35 years, I guess I should say something. Hosee said, "We've got to present your pin next Monday," and I said, "What in the world?" He said, "For 35 years of service." I said, "Do they make one?" All right. The county hired me fresh out of elementary school in 1987.
Robin, I thought it was gonna be kindergarten.
I love it.
We could back it up to that. I made $9,644 a year that year. That was big money to me. And so as I was trying to figure out what to say this morning, I said, "What does 35 years of service mean? What does it mean to find your way to the same place through everything that happens in life, marriages, births, divorce, deaths, and hurricanes? Well, my dad told me to get a job with the county and go to work every day, no matter what. He said, "Be at work and give 200%. That way, if you fall short, it won't be by very much." He instilled in me that work ethic of the greatest generation. Well, five years ago, I looked up, and he had died without giving me further instruction. So I'm here for a little while longer, as I decide what to do. Thirty-five years of service means stability. That's the ability to withstand force and stress without being distorted, dislodged, or damaged. One of the awards that I received on the state level, aside from the Old Timers Award, was the famed Lighter Knot Award. Now, the lighter knot, or post, is a piece of resin'd heartwood pine that has become almost petrified or fossilized, right? It's actually a word that people want. It is rot-resistant. It's been used by surveyors as a corner designation, most often in swampy areas, and it's assumed that it will be there, used for a reference marker, for a very, very, very long time. Well, there you are. I'm stuck in the marsh forever, right? So what do you say after 35 years of service? Well, I came up with two things. And one of them, the first, is that it's an opportunity to stand here today in the presence of all my leaders, and to acknowledge this longevity. I sincerely appreciate the patience of all who have taught me and all who have worked with me, and I thank the county for allowing its employees to attend educational classes in Raleigh and elsewhere. That part of what the county has done for me has, has been wonderful, and I appreciate that in the budget. It has enabled us as employees to carry out our duties without having to find out what to do or how to answer a question correctly, like a car salesman or something, and that training has enabled me to serve the people of Dare County efficiently. I have enjoyed helping the public understand the requirements and policies that are set out by state and local government, and I especially enjoy helping local folks, those whose ancestors have passed their property down from generation to generation. I belong to those people. Both my mother and father's families have lived in what is now Dare County since at least the 1800s. I'm a direct descendant of four Body Island Lighthouse keepers, so I am rooted in this marsh, and I live to serve the many taxpayers of Dare County. I am here to help. The second thing that came to my mind that I should say after 35 years of service, while I have your attention, is that I've seen the budget have many ups and downs. There's many times that our pay was considerably lower than the private sector, and at times, we've had to freeze spending for educational costs and various line items. For several years, there were no cost of living or merit raises, and nobody said anything, nobody complained. Because aside from all that, through the years, we had benefits. Our benefits were the best, and other employers didn't offer them. People wanted a job with the county for the benefits. Now, I believe we have roughly 40 jobs open right now on the website. People keep leaving us for better offers, I assume, and we recently had an opening in the appraisal department that I believe had under 10 applicants. We used to go through so many applications, so I'm not sure what's happening. It's true that our benefits have been scaled back in the past just a little. So on this monumental occasion, celebrating employee endurance, I would ask you to please continue to look into benefits for my coworkers. You can train a person to do a job, but actually living through a job over time makes one an invaluable, time-saving, knowledgeable asset. Most specifically, could you look into the longevity benefit that we have? It inspires an employee to invest their time with us. It was cut in half some years ago, and putting that back in place may help maintain our outstanding work team. Thank you for 35 years.
Thank you.
I have been.
Chairman, that brings us to item three on the agenda, our Employee of the Month, and Pat Urban will make that presentation.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is my great opportunity, and I'm pleased to introduce to the board the Water Department's selection for Employee of the Month, Jessica Parra.
Hi, Diana.
Jessica began her career at the Water Department in May 2021 as a customer service representative at our Kildebelle Hills office. Jessica has a bachelor's degree in business administration slash HR. She is bilingual and can speak, read, and write Spanish, which provides valuable assistance to our Spanish language customers. Jessica has since been elevated to the Senior Customer Service Representative. She has a can-do attitude in her approach to her position. She takes on new responsibility and never turns down a challenge. Jessica is pleasant, considerate when communicating with our customers, and she has recently accepted the additional duty of managing our debt set-off program. And if you were paying attention to the last person up here, we'd like to see you around for 35 years, if possible. You get the plaque for your desk.
Thank you so much.
And here is your Employee of the Month certificate.
Thank you. Can I hook it?
Oh, sure. You're welcome.
Those of you who are just receiving an award, if you'll go right out through this door to get a picture made, please. Chairman, that brings us to item four on the agenda, public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When you come, when I recognize you, please come to the podium. You'll have five minutes to make your public comment. A green light will come on when your time begins. A yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left, and a red light will come on when you need to conclude your remarks. On our sign-up sheet, first I have Laura Allendorf.
Welcome this morning.
Oh, thank you. Good morning. I'm Laura Allendorf, representing League of Women Voters of Dare County, here to present the 2022 Citizens' Guide, Your Guide to Community Services. Complimentary copies of the guide, published by the League since 1988, are distributed annually to government and businesses, business offices throughout Dare County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national governmental agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. Our guide is published under the auspices of the State League of Women Voters Citizen Education Foundation. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward publication expenses. Thank you, and thanks to all staff members who helped update information for this year's version. League members are now distributing 6,600 copies of the guide from Duck to Hatteras Village, Roanoke Island, and Mainland Dare. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the Baum and Fessident Centers, as well as town and county offices. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is open to anyone of voting age, male or female. Students 16 and older may join free, and new members are always welcome. Thank you for your support. We know you'll find our guide useful.
Thank you so much, Laura. Appreciate it.
Next is Diane Denny.
I'll, I'll speak under item six. Thank you.
Next is Tom Amicucci.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tom. Welcome.
Chairman and board, thank you very much for the opportunity. I actually came to give thanks today to Danny Couch and to Bobby Outen. I am the current president of the Rodanthia Wave South of Civic Association, and last week, Mr. Couch and Mr. Outen, among others, came down to address the houses falling in the ocean, and it was really informative. I, I think we were not aware so much activity was taking place by the county, and we want to say thank you for that. We've also reached out to Superintendent Halek. We're interested in helping. We know we can't prevent the ocean from coming, but we want to help you on the front end. We don't know what that means, but whatever ideas you have, the board and the association is willing to be involved. So like emptying out, I, I know, I'm not getting into legal things, but emptying out the house ahead of time, a lot of people have needs for pots and pans and such, so if you work out the details of how we can help, instead of having 30 people come and clean up the beach, we could clean out the house. I know it's legal, but when you figure it out, we're here. The other thing, near and dear to my heart, I'm also one of the organizers for the Rodanthia Bridge Run. And again, I wanted to thank Danny and the host of Dare County, people who came down last week, Drew Pearson, the Sheriff's Department, help us coordinate our event. We don't have a date yet, but we have 600 people clamoring to get on the bridge. When the date finally comes, we understand it could be the last two weeks of March or the first two weeks of April, so we have another window here. So we have 600 people who can and can't make it. They're coming from different states. We have people coming from California. It's crazy, but we have 100 people, 150 people on our waiting list. It's like an airline, one out, one in, right? So it's gonna be the old bar situation. We have like two dozen sponsors. We have over 75 volunteers, and again, I think the big thing is, just to say thank you, we are, as you well know, unincorporated, so these monies that we can raise through this fundraiser will help us mow the lawn, keep Mary Helen busy back there, provide scholarships, all of that. So again, I didn't know Danny was not gonna be here, but I wanted to say to him, thank you, and thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Next is Catherine Fagan.
Welcome, Ms. Moore, Catherine.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, and first of all, let me say that I offer my concurrence to your statements about Ukraine. You know, for many of us, it's extremely personal. I housed many Ukrainian students who I know are still there. I have FaceTimed with them while they were down in basements. It's a horrible thing. I'm, I'm not talking about anything that's on the calendar today. It's something that I would like to see added at some point. They are doing 56 houses on very small plots of land out at the North End, and it's being done by Old North End LLC. You know, there's a saying, I think it's the saying for the Washington Post, that democracy dies in darkness, and the fact of the matter is, is there is no notice of this. And when we, I, I did complain about it when I found out about it, like, where was this? They go, "Well, it was posted." Well, I have scoured Airport Road, and from what I understand, there were a couple notices that were kind of hidden in the trees. They could have had one up the top of Airport Road, they could have had one on the easements that they intended to use, they could have done something more. They could have let us know so that we could address this sooner. There are a number of things. First of all, there are 56 new houses that are going between Garrett Road and, and Airport Road. Those 56 houses will all have their traffic on Airport Road. None of it is going through Breakwood. It's all going through Airport. I moved into my home on that property at the top of Airport Road in 2007. But there was traffic on that road, but it wasn't that bad. It was okay. And, but since I have been there, they have, in addition to the aquarium and the airport that were both there when I moved in, they now have the SPCA, which I thought, well, you know what, that's okay, because they also then put in the dog park, and we need that, and that's okay. And having the SPCA right next to the dog park was great, so that animals didn't have to stay all caged up. That was good. Then they put in the emergency center. Each of these steps have increased traffic. That road is like a main highway half the time. It didn't used to be. Now it is. Now they want to add 56 more houses. You can assume that each of those houses will probably have two cars. You won't be able to get out onto the highway. It is difficult at times to get out of my driveway now. It's only going to be increased that much more. My question is, has there been a Department of Transportation impact study on this? And if so, where is it? I'd like to see it. Secondly, they're taking down, they're gonna be taking down vegetation, trees and whatever, from that part that is part of the migratory bird path. It connects with Sir Walter Raleigh land, and the birds migrate completely through that corridor. I can get up in the morning and also late in the afternoon and have literally thousands of birds in my yard, many of them not natives to this area. They are migrating. Now they are proposing taking down those trees. There's, I've been told, when I objected to that, to one of the builders, that, well, they're gonna, since the plats are so small, they're probably not gonna take down all those trees. Well, that's nonsense. Number one, you gotta take a lot down just to put a house in there, and then the damage that you do to the root systems kills trees long after you're gone. So it is going to do that. Has anybody done an environmental impact study on this project? Do we know if this is gonna violate the migrant, the federal laws? The Migratory Bird Act is one such federal law. There are other federal laws involved. Has anybody looked into that? I kind of tend to doubt it. I think they just saw dollar signs, 56 houses, let's put them up and put them up fast. Now, is this gonna help affordable housing? Do you think so? I don't think so. I think this is all about somebody making a bunch of money. Those houses are not gonna go to people who wait tables that can, that could afford them. They're not gonna get that. So what I'm asking for is that there be some actual open notice, some big signs that we all can see. some big signs that we all can see. I've made out flyers with the URL to the tract, so you can see the tract. I'm sure those of you up there have seen it. And I walked up and down Airport Road yesterday. I only made it about halfway down. But everybody I talked to, nobody knew about this project. When they saw the plat, they were outraged. They could not believe it. And they further can't believe that all this traffic is going to be on Airport. So what's next? Make it a four lane and take away our front yards? So I'm asking for your consideration. I'm, oh, one more issue. I know the red light's on. But the water, where is the water going to go? We are, I'm in a no flood zone. I bet that changes. And I understand that the plans that they sort of have in place involve piping that is actually too small, from somebody else who told me. And also, I am told by somebody who worked with the Water Department that we, we don't have the water for that end of the yard, for that, for that property. So I think it is incumbent of us to do some work on this now and not wait for the problem to hit us in the face and go, oh, what do we do now? We need some forward thinking.
Thank you, Catherine.
That's all I have on the sign up sheet. Any other public comment this morning? Seeing, is there any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we'd move to item five on the agenda. And this is an update from Bright Spring Hospice Services. And we have Jody Moore and Karen McDaniel here today.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Chairman, Commissioners, it's good to see you.
Good morning.
So for those of you who don't remember, my name's Jody Moore. I'm the Vice President of Population Health and Post-Acute Strategy for Bright Spring Health Services. Joined today by my friend and colleague, Kevin McDaniel, who's our Senior VP of Hospice Operations. Wanted to take a few minutes and give you an update on hospice and then allow for your questions. We apologize for the miscommunication in the scheduling snafu. I did get some feedback from last Commissioners' meeting. So that's one reason we tried to get down here as soon as possible to make sure we had the opportunity to answer your questions. A couple of quick updates before we go into the slide deck, which I think you have in front of you. Is that right? Did the IT get them up?
Yeah, we do.
Good stuff. We luckily just finished our six-month mark operating our hospice and home health operations. So this Friday, the remaining seven employees that transitioned from Dare County will receive their six-month retention bonus. So that will come in their paycheck this Friday. So that's a good thing. And then we actually have a small, a small part in the purchase agreement that any funds remaining, not distributed employees, if they're not employed at that point, would be returned to the county. So we will work with the county manager and team to make sure you get the check for the remaining from us. So lots of good things going on. We're going to walk through the deck with some updates for you. Feel free to stop and ask us questions. Kevin's going to chime in. But we hope we answer your questions today. We're really excited about what's going on here in Dare County. And this has been a good experience for us. I will tell you, I don't know if counties in North Carolina are competitive. I live in Guilford. I think we're competitive. But we also acquired Stanley County in 2021. Their home health, y'all are, y'all are beating them. You're, you're outperforming them from a home health performance standpoint. So we're excited about that. Let's see, which button was I supposed to push? That button. So Michael gave you some of this last week or two weeks ago when he, he joined you. We do have our ACHC site survey to validate operations. And then, yes, sir?
ACHC.
Accreditation for accreditation company for healthcare, right?
Yeah, we are swamped, guys, with acronyms from every department, every agency, every corner of the state. So accreditation, I'm going to write it down.
Accreditation Company for Healthcare Agencies. So they're based in Cary, North Carolina?
Okay, that was still too fast, Jody.
Accreditation Company.
Company.
For healthcare organizations.
For healthcare organizations. For healthcare.
So.
Okay.
So they, they credit things like home health agencies, hospices, personal care services, some ambulatory sites, some infusion centers, right?
They have some overlap.
Yep. So they do a lot of different stuff. They'll be on to do their full site survey. So that is a more in-depth process. Y'all were ACHC accredited prior to our acquisition. So that made that process easy for us to transition that. We do have to move them to our policies and our procedures, and that's been something that we've been working on. Kevin's team, Alisa Mason, has been down. She's actually down this week to make sure that quality, that it's done in a good quality manner. So one of the things that's relevant to hospice operations for us is the one thing we have struggled is to find a hospice community liaison. So that's a person that works with community members, physicians, hospitals, to make sure that we have the right relationships, we facilitate transitions for patients into our care efficiently. We've challenged, we've had a challenge with that. Now, we've been really successful hiring overall. So that's been the only position we've struggled to hire, with the exception, I think.
How many total employees are now a part of Adoration here in Dare County? Because I remember we were struggling with employees at the time of the transition and sale. Do you know, Jody?
I'm going through my head. So I think on the hospice side, there's seven.
Seven. He just said a while ago, seven on the hospice.
And then I think.
Everybody, not just hospice.
No, he mentioned hospice.
Hospice is seven, and I think there are additional 19 in home health. And so there are a couple of office staff that are shared.
Okay.
Right? So we're right around, we're 25, 26?
Okay, thank you.
So when, and that, that's, that's part-time, that's PRN. When PRN is, I don't even know what PRN stands for, but it means.
As needed.
As needed. I don't know what the PRN actually stands for.
Just as needed.
So, so those are even smaller than part-time.
Remember I told you about those?
Yeah, it's a Latin term.
Is it?
It is, yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Commissioner, so, yeah, lots, so we're doing great with that. But we've, we've had a good, but the only, the role we've had trouble with is our community hospice liaison. The other part of that role that we think's really exciting is that role helps educate the community on the appropriate utilization of hospice. So, and hopefully what we do there is our goal is we want folks in hospice earlier. And to fully utilize that benefit, which on average is set out to be a six-month benefit, we want them in that benefit as long as possible. We find that people have a better end-of-life experience the longer they're in hospice. And that's very common. You'll see folks that, you know, they'll be in hospice care for three weeks, but the hospice nurse gets, we have, we have it here, where the hospice nurse gets called out in the obituary as, in family thanks and acknowledgement. And that's for two weeks of care. So imagine what we could do if we could get them on for four, six, eight weeks of care, and how much easier that can be for the family. So that's one reason we want this community liaison down here, is to help educate the community. And so folks aren't honestly afraid of hospice. So, and then I think Michael touched on this when he was here two weeks ago. We're still searching for an office location. I'm actually, just got a text sitting in the back of the room. I'm supposed to go look at one at lunch. But that's been trying to find the right footprint at the right budget point. And we were, we were prepared for a more aggressive budget here. We, we expected that. Has been a challenge, because what we also want to do is be somewhat centrally located for our staff so that we don't have to put it up really far north when our staff has to cover the entire island, the entire county. So we want to try to be centrally located to be sensitive to the needs of our staff. Questions about any of that? So I think this is where we'll spend a good chunk of our time, and we'll, we'll take questions here around contracted payers. There's a list in front of you about contracted payers. I want to be pretty clear on the process that we have to undergo to contract payers. And I want to also apologize if I may have misrepresented something when Rexanne and I spoke here about a year ago on the process. We really can't extend contracts until we finish the tie-in notice in the agreement of change of ownership with CMS, so the federal government. That CMS acknowledged that change on January 4th of this year. So that was when we were really able to kick off a lot of the work with our insurers.
We, we didn't know that. I didn't know we would have a 100-day dark period, guys. That's the thing I would have been very helpful to know upfront before, but continue.
So Commissioner Ross, I take full responsibility of not explaining that well when I was here.
Because that's kind of crucial, you know?
So what we, what we believe is the impact was minimal. As we talked to our staff, we shouldn't, we may have worked with Albemarle Home Health and Hospice to get coverage where they're in contract, and we weren't. But our commitment, and Kevin can, can back me up, our commitment is, we're going to take you regardless of payer status until this is all kind of settled, settled out. So our commitment moving forward is, if Albemarle can't service you or doesn't have a contract, or we don't, we don't care. We're going to accept the patient and take care of the patient.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you very much for that.
90% of our admissions, 99% of our admissions are Medicare primary. We do have some Blue Cross Blue Shield, as we get into the numbers and other payers. But across our company, you know, we're, we're well above the 98% mark on Medicare.
Yeah.
We do have some commercial payers, but it's the majority Medicare.
I got a, I see Sheila's in the, in the room. Your email to me in November over this issue, did I highlight 335 Medicare out of 375? So yes, a vast majority are Medicare covered. Okay, yeah.
So, and, and, and sometimes we are a little bit at the mercies of an insurer. And this is when the best, the, the best leverage is the leverage of just like public comment with you when you have constituents in front of you pleading their case. The best leverage is Blue Cross Blue Shield customers saying, I'm not happy you're not under contract with them or not that. But we don't want to put our, our patients and this population in any type of risk or stress in this time. We work in a very specific time in post-acute care and, and home health to hospice and that transition near end of life. So we'll make that commitment. Until we finish this and resolve this, we won't make payer an issue of this. Now, we may work with, we may try to work with Albemarle if they're under contract. And that's what people like Blue Cross Blue Shield do, is they'll try to just agree to one contract in the territory to manage their profits and losses. But we, we make that commitment to you and to that. And we, and we clearly communicated that to our staff last week. So hopefully, they knew that last week. Questions about this? In hospice, and what, I do want to call one differentiation. So home health and hospice are different in the fact that typically with a hospice patient that is of Medicare age and post-65, they convert to traditional Medicare from their Medicare Advantage plan for the hospice benefit, unless CMS changes that. That's under review. We don't want them to change that. But in home health, you maintain your payer. So Blue Cross Blue Shield would maintain being your payer if you, regardless of your status. But in hospice, you elect the Medicare hospice benefit as you begin your transition. Questions about that? So here's our referral volume for, for hospice. I'm not going to break down all of these, but I am going to call out one of the things that we're really excited about. Y'all did some of this, and we want to continue this. And that's the, what we call the, the transition of patients from our home health agency into our hospice setting, because we recognize that folks progress in their illness state. And we believe that that home health, that six patients that came from home health to hospice, that's the best way a transition can occur, because that means they're in a level of care for a longer period of time. And then in a lot of places, they get a very warm handoff from caregiver, from clinician to clinician to make sure that happens. Are there questions about these numbers? We are on track to be slightly ahead of where y'all were in 2020 from a volume standpoint. But it, but it's slight. And that's one reason we want to make sure we have that community liaison in place so as we continue the healthy growth of that organization. Anything to add, Kevin?
Yeah, we're, we're excited about it. We've got a great group of people here now. We've got a great leader. Again, hiring the community liaison to get out and do some education and talk about what we do, you know, is the, probably one of the key pieces for us right now to really grow that business. And again, assembling a staff that is caring and loving Medicare. We've got manuals that can stack up higher than this podium, but it's about finding people that are caring and loving to not only each other, but the patients. And that type of team will, will, will provide a great product here in your county.
So this kind of just gives you an overall. We've only had two discharges, so that's a number we look at, or some folks call them hosp, graduating from hospice. Those individuals actually moved out of the service territory. So, but you can see that, that's a number we see. We do want to see a longer length of stay. I think you'll see that number in a minute. And that's just because we, we believe we can do better for the patient the longer we have them on service.
Before, go back.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure my mother was one of those nine deaths in February.
Yes, sir.
Peak resources. Of the seven people that you hired from our staff to come onboard on the hospice side, I want to commend you for, and I wish I had her name right now, but she's about 74 years of age.
Pat.
Pat, yes. She sat with my mother the last week and with me every single day. And she made sure that she was comforted and she had what she needed. And I cannot thank y'all enough for that.
Chairman, would we extend our condolences to you? We recognize that any transition is, is challenging. Thank you for acknowledging Pat. She is a saint.
Yes.
Of a lady. I've sat in one of the coffee shops in Kill Devil, talking to her and listening to her discuss her love for what she did and what she does in home health and hospice, and now full-time in hospice, because she is, she is, she is solely working in the hospice space. It's amazing. That's the nurse I want caring for my mom.
Amen. She was phenomenal.
And thank you, sir. So as you can see, our average daily census, and this is, this is a number that we track to make sure that we're kind of doing the right things, is growing. It's dipped a little bit. As you saw, November, what, we had a, a higher level of deaths than what we've typically had. But again, we're growing, and that's what we want to be doing. This is probably, as, we ran into one of our, our folks this morning, and she said, this is her proudest slide. And this talks to quality of service and our patient experience score. So we have 100% recommend on rating of this hospice. And you can see, we are far exceeding the national average. And being, that, that's what we want to do, is we want to do better. Now, I did challenge Alisa last week when I talked to her. I said, so what are we doing about training family to care for patients? Because that's our lowest score. And her response was, we're still beating the national average. But we want to make sure that we do a good job of educating the family around what to expect, because hospice care type is different. So with that being said, that's one thing where we also believe that community liaison, getting that education as early in the process as possible can help and hopefully, and hopefully improve that. Questions for us?
How many, how many total patients are y'all working with now, roughly?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven.
On the hospice side?
On the hospice side.
And then total?
Seventy-three or four in home health. So eighty-five?
So I think at our best, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sheila, I think our best, when we had it, was in the 50 range, mid 50s or upper? Explain that to me, if you don't mind.
And in our peak, when we were operating fully staffed and serving the, the high end of patients, I want to say that was back in 2014, 15, combined, we were actually about 120.
Oh, wow.
But where you're remembering the 50 is when we were struggling with staff over the past two years, we were anywhere from 30 to mid 50s as far as our combined census.
Okay, all right. Thank you for correcting me.
And our goal is to be back into the 120s, 130s for y'all. But we had a, internally, we had about a two-year ramp to that. Just to, because we want to grow healthy. We just, we don't want to grow too fast.
Right.
So you, across our enterprise, the entire Bright Spring, we have seen length of stay with patient care go down, not only on the home health side, but on the hospice side. From a staffing standpoint, we've had significant headwinds in regard to staffing and finding people to care for these patients. But I think in general, we've seen patients staying at home But I think in general, we've seen patients staying at home and receiving care at home, sometimes without professional care, more than any other time in our lives. So that may be some of the drop. We did eight admissions in February. If you calculate that out and you do eight with an average length of stay somewhere around ninety days, the census on the hospice side should be in the high twenties, early, low thirties with that type of pace. And again, that's without a community liaison. And we have to have someone out educating not only medical professionals, but the community about what we do.
I had a couple, if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
At the time of the sale transition to you guys, we heard quite a bit of public comment. And some of that public comment was, gosh, this is going to result in patients being neglected. That, not hospice for a moment, I'm going to home healthcare for just a second.
Yes, sir.
My suspicion, from what you've shown us today, is that that's not happening. And I'm looking at Dr. Davies as well. Are we experiencing home healthcare gaps that we cannot meet, that we cannot address? Because again, I sat here and I listened to a number of folks basically proclaim the upcoming, you know, tragedy that was going to unfold for people needing home healthcare and visiting nurse care and so forth. I don't believe that's happening. I've not heard such, and I guess I'm looking at you, Jody, to offer any thought on that.
Yes, sir. Well, Commissioner Ross, I remember that evening here.
Yes, sir.
For the public hearing and public comments. I would say every transition, every acquisition we work on has bumps, and so did this one. We had a hiccup here or there as we learned, as we got staff in place. But I think overall, we're providing a good service to Dare County. And I think one of you, I can't remember which one, asked me, what do I do in the mornings? And I get up thinking about home health, hospice.
That was me.
In our continuum of care. And that's what allows us to make sure we're growing. And we don't believe we're done growing here. So I feel comfortable saying that we're providing a high level of care to your community. Have there been mistakes and hiccups? Yes, sir. We're human. It's a public, it's an operation that has a heavy service nature to it. But I do believe that compared to where the county operations were, as Dr. Davies shared with, when you were struggling with staffing, I feel that we're, we have a higher level of acceptance. We've made sure we've managed the geographic area to cover the island and the mainland equally, and really have not had any geographical challenges when it came to accepting referrals. So I feel that we're offering and being honest to our word of providing, making sure we're caring for those individuals and providing an excellent level of service to you all today.
That's what I was hoping to hear. And my other question, you've already answered at the bottom of page two. We have admitted a patient without an approved payer. We do not turn down for insurance.
Yep.
End of story. I don't need anything more, guys. That's the plan that I was seeking back in November when I first came across the item that we had. And that is a satisfactory plan, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And we have, I do want to celebrate Outer Banks Hospital. They've worked with us, and sometimes they've provided us compensation to care for patients that best suits us. So they've been a really good partner in this conversation in providing care. And we've been creative with them. And that's kind of, I think that's the cool part of healthcare, is when at a local level, we get to sit there and create them up with creative solutions and really do what's right for the patient to keep them at home. And from a Bright Spring and an Adoration perspective, our goal is to keep that patient at home.
Vice Chairman has a question.
Jody, Mike, thank y'all for being here today. Just a question, just to review some numbers that you said. You said you had seventy-three or seventy-four patients in home health right now?
Yes.
And then an additional seven?
Eleven.
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 Okay, sorry. Sorry, I missed that.
Seven employees.
Yeah. And you indicated a while ago that you were anticipating growth in Dare County and that you would like to go up to a hundred and thirty or so.
Combined between the services, that's where we would like to be, but we don't have, our run rate takes us there, I can't remember if it's year two or year three.
Yeah.
And that's, when we acquired Dare County, we really looked at growth for about a three-year plan and made decisions on a three-year plan of what we were going to do.
Yeah. So with the staff that you have right now, what would be the number that your current staff would be able to hold? Is it beyond where you are right now?
I'll let Kevin answer the hospice.
On the hospice side, typically for a nurse, we're anywhere from ten to twelve patients per nurse. And then we have PR and staff. We have social workers and chaplains. Those are typically one social worker, one chaplain to forty. So, you know, we're staffed right now with three nurses and eleven patients. So we're staffed right now for about thirty-five patients.
Okay.
So we, we're.
So you can handle the growth?
We can handle the growth. We're ready. And again, we've had some success with hiring just recently. And as you know, hiring in healthcare right now has been very difficult, but we've had some short-term success.
Thank you.
And we'll need to continue to hire in home health, but I think in near-term growth, we're pretty well-staffed. I think if you look, if we grow probably another twenty percent, we'd have to make sure we've got a good hiring initiative. We offered sign-on bonuses. We did some creative things to make sure folks were engaged. So that's things we were trying to do. We were able to get the staff. We have a fleet car checkout program, so they have access to fleet vehicles. That was one of the big concerns with staff, especially when going down to Hatteras. So we do have four-wheel-drive vehicles and access to that. So that was, and honestly, the fleet cars turned out to be a big recruiting side to us against a competitor, because they did offer fleet cars. So lots of things to make sure we're taking care of our employees.
Once again, please express my appreciation to Pat. She sat with me the morning, all morning, when my mother passed until they were able to come pick her up. And please share that with Pat for me, if you will.
Yes, I do want to address people like Pat, is what I said at the beginning of this, is assembling a group of people like Pat, it's what makes the difference.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate your kind words towards her.
Any other questions? Commissioner Tobin?
I'd like to just say a couple things. I've read three different obituaries that have referenced you guys in a very, very, very positive way. That means a lot. And also the fact that you're taking patients regardless of their payment status is extremely well. And knowing the chairman's experience with his mom, it's just, I think you guys are doing a good job. I hope it keeps expanding the way we think it's going to, and I thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Anyone else? Well, thank you all again for being here this morning. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Travis.
County Manager?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda. This is Health and Human Services, the Public Health Division's Caregivers' Day Out presentation. And we've got Denise Denny and Sheila Davies here for that.
Diane, good morning.
Hi, Diane.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sheila, good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to be here with you this morning. I'm here with Diane Denny. We also have Jan Collins here with the Dementia Friendly Coalition. And we're here to share a new exciting program that's going to be launched, and I'm going to let Diane share that. But first, I just want to give you a little bit of background. The Dementia Friendly Coalition actually evolved out of, gosh, going back to Community Health Needs Assessment many years ago with identification of just aging issues and specifically a need for additional resources for individuals battling with dementia and memory loss. There was a task force that was created, like happens oftentimes when we identify needs through the Community Health Assessment. It was the Dementia Friendly Task Force. And then the passion and dedication of a number of volunteers, really led by Diane here, turned this into a nonprofit in Dare County, and that's happened with other initiatives. The Community Care Coalition is a great example, where you start with something small, you have the amazing passion and commitment of dedicated volunteers, and then they take it and grow it into something even stronger. Some of the initiatives that happened under the task force that continue now under the nonprofit coalition was the work that happened with the Outer Banks Hospital, becoming the first dementia-friendly hospital in the state of North Carolina. It's a monumental accomplishment and something that this group and this community can be really proud of. Also, work this group did was establishing dementia-friendly restaurant identification or training, so restaurants can bear the seal of the Purple Seahorse. So it's notifying caregivers and individuals that are maybe wanting to choose a specific restaurant or business to take their loved ones that they know staff have been trained on how best to handle and serve individuals who are dealing with dementia. So just really exciting. We are going to partner with the Dementia Friendly Coalition to bring this new program, and we're excited as a department to help and support the wonderful work that Diane and the board are doing. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So it had been a dream of ours from the get-go, I think, to have a caregiver's day out or to have some type of a respite program for those caregivers that are caring for those living with dementia. And thank goodness, it's coming to fruition. Hopefully, by the end of the month, we will have our first program. We're going to do it on Mondays. The caregiver will be able to drop off their loved one that they're caring for. We will engage them, giving them a purposeful meaning in life, and the caregiver can go do what they need to do. They can go to a doctor's appointment, they can go have coffee with a friend, they can go home and take a nap, they can do whatever they need to do, they can go and recharge, and that's what's so important. It also gives that caregiver the time to not be isolated, because especially in the last two years, so many of our caregivers, as well as those living with dementia, have been isolated. They've been at home, as we all have been, I guess. But try explaining that to someone who has dementia. They can't understand, why do I have to wear this mask? Why can't I go out? So we're really excited about it. It is an all-volunteer program. We have trained our, our initial staff, our initial volunteers for the program. We did that last Friday. We're doing everything we can. We're doing criminal histories. We're doing, they have to be COVID immunized completely, as well as our participants in the program. We are a social setting. It's not going to be, we're not going to do hands-on care at this point, but it is a social setting, again, for them to be engaged in a purposeful environment. We are always, we're looking for participants at this point. So if you know of anyone that has, is caring for someone living with dementia, we encourage you to give them our information so that they can come be a part of it. They have to go through the application process and doctor's forms as well. We feel like it's a really good service for those caregivers, and we're excited about that. I'm going to back up for one second to something that Sheila said about dementia-friendly. I think you probably have all seen our Purple Seahorse. If you see the Purple Seahorse, that establishment has been trained by our staff to be dementia-friendly, to know how to interact with those living with dementia. Again, it goes back to the isolation thing, that the caregiver and the person living with dementia no longer have to be isolated. They can go out into the public and be accepted and be included. It's including them in our community. So we've not trained only restaurants, we've also trained some banks. We've trained insurance companies. We've worked with social services and trained some of their staff. We've trained Department of Transportation. So trying to get all the businesses so that we will be a dementia-friendly community. The other two things I want to share with you, we do do, every year, we have an annual caregiver conference, which unfortunately, for the last two years, we've not been able to have that. But we will have that this year on March the thirtieth. I'll leave some flyers out by the front door, if you know anyone that's caring for someone with dementia that may benefit from that conference. We also have a caregiver support group that we meet the third, the second Wednesday of every month at the Baum Center. Also have some cards that we have, that our information is on there of the services that we can provide. We do provide, one other that I'll mention is our respite scholarship. So if someone is caring for someone with dementia and they need a break, they need to go recharge, which we all need to do, we can provide some funds to help them either have someone come into their home, or they can go to a community, to a facility, and we'll help pay for that. So that scholarship is one of the things that we like to promote, because pretty much underused, and we would like to have that. We're also looking for volunteers for the Caregiver Day Out Program or any for our coalition. So we would invite folks to join us. Any questions?
No, thank you, Diane. Anybody have any questions? Jim?
I would just like to say, there's nobody more qualified to run this program than Diane.
Oh, absolutely.
And thank you so much for what you're doing. It's a blessing to our community. It truly is.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more, Jim. Diane's had a long career in that.
Yes.
In that area and just phenomenal work. But this Dementia Friendly Coalition, this program is thinking outside the box, certainly helping those caregivers. So I commend y'all for coming up with this.
Absolutely. Diane, has there been any coordination at all with the other dementia support group, the Gentle Expert Memory Care?
Jim.
Yeah.
And Jim actually is on our coalition, so we partner on quite a few things.
I know this has been a dream of theirs for a long time to have this respite period for caregivers.
Right.
So I'm very excited for it.
Right now, what Jim does is to provide, I think they call it, I know they do, they call it Harmony Cafe.
Yes, I've been there.
So the caregiver comes with the person living with dementia, and they do activities, music, entertainment. They do it together.
Yes.
The caregiver. The difference being that we're going to have, take care of the person living with dementia while the caregiver is out. So just given a different option. We can use both. Their folks, the ones that go to Jim, could very well use our program. The ones that are in our program could very well go to Jim. So we refer back and forth in that case.
Yeah, that's great, Diane. Thank you. Thank you.
Good to do. Anyone else?
Diane, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
And I will tell y'all that anybody who has not taken the training for as a business is concerned, they need to do it, because it really pays off. We had a situation, I think I shared before.
Yeah.
Where we had someone, and just to look in the person's eyes, they didn't, they were scared. And they just went to the bathroom and then couldn't find their way back.
And if you think about somebody that goes to a restaurant and they look at a menu, it's like, they've got this menu, it's like, yeah, well, what do I choose? What do I pick? They're overwhelmed. So teaching those servers how to respond to that.
Yep. Hi, Graham.
Good to do.
Thank you, Diane.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great job.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda, and that's Health and Human Services, Public Health Division, Amendment to Dare County Ordinance thirty-four point oh two. Sheila will be back.
Stay right up. Thank you. All right. Actually, I think the next two agenda items. All right, so this ordinance request to change this is, whoops, right plane, because of a Medicaid requirement and a bulletin that was issued last year in September and then updated January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two for the North Carolina State Department of Medicaid for standard and tailored planned tobacco-free policy requirement. That's the requirement that Medicaid is now imposing on any agency that contracts with them to provide medical, behavioral health, intellectual development disabilities, or traumatic brain injury service providers are required by July first, twenty-twenty-two to adopt a tobacco-free policy requirement for their entire facilities and campuses. So that process needing to come before you to make a change to the current Dare County ordinance where, right now, the Health and Human Services Department, we have a fifty-foot buffer that's listed in the ordinance, and we need to remove that. So under the local ordinance on page twelve, if you're looking in your packet, so thirty-four point oh two, section one A, would be to strike the sentence that's currently there that mentions the fifty-foot buffer, so to speak, and replace that with, the new A would be occupied by operated, excuse me, occupied. operated, excuse me, occupied by, operated by, or used to perform services by the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services. And then you see the footnote at the bottom is just to describe why. This is a Medicaid requirement, so we need this change to be compliant by July 1 of this year. We will then, if you approve this change, would update our signage on our sites, anything that references the 50-foot, we would remove that and just make sure our entire campus is tobacco-free.
Right. Any questions, Sheila?
Motion to approve.
Well, absolutely. There's a motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Tobin, seconded by?
I second.
Commissioner Bateman, the county manager, had something.
Just one thing, just to make it clear to those that are listening, I know that you all get it, this is just for the Health Department sites only. When we went smoke-free some years ago on our campuses, we had a number of public comments because we went 100% smoke fees, what was proposed. We backed up on that and put in that 50-foot buffer to allow, and created a smoking area so that people that were smokers, that were coming into our buildings, had somewhere to go to smoke if they needed to, and that applied to everything. So we'll still have that, say, at the courthouse or wherever. This will just apply at the Health Department buildings under that Medicaid rule.
To be all three of our locations.
Yeah. Thank you, county manager. Any other questions? Hearing none, and those in favor of approving the amendment to the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
If Sheila stays right there, then this is Amendment to Dare County Ordinance 91, Section 91.030.
So the requested changes here are related to, this is specifically for the dangerous or potentially dangerous dog ordinance. When you look at the packet, you see lots of highlights of the word "dog." So there's really four changes that I'm bringing forth. One is kind of language cleanup. The state general statute, and then the title of our ordinance is, well, the state statute references dangerous or potentially dangerous dog. Our ordinance title is dangerous or potentially dangerous dog. However, throughout the ordinance is the word "animal," and so this is just to make the language consistent. Wherever you see "dog," it's because it's saying "animal," and it should really be "dog" consistent with what's in the state statute as well.
Why, I saw this, I was just curious, why we would narrow it rather than broaden? It just struck me as kind of going the wrong direction.
Well, and you can, and so, I mean, if you want to broaden it, to be consistent with, I mean, my personal opinion is, that would be, then, do we get in the business of things coming to public health that are a snake or, I mean, there's other animals.
Well, that's my next question. If it's narrowed to only a dog, and there's a dangerous animal that's not a dog?
I think you're hitting on a point, this was prompted by an attack by a dog that came into someone else's house and killed another dog, and so when the ordinance was adopted, it was in response to that. I think there may have been some discussion about an animal. The problem that we have is that the state statutes don't fit very well or work very well. There's a state statute that basically says if you're a dangerous dog or a potentially dangerous dog, then you can muzzle and fence and do some, but that's really the limit of what you've got, and there are very few enforcement powers in that for the Health Director. We adopted this ordinance to try to give some more teeth to the Health Director. We probably made it too strong because we didn't allow any discretion on a borderline case. If it was a, if it drew blood or there was a scratch, then automatically you're euthanizing the dog, and so I think we backed up on that a little bit or attempted, or going to. Whether we do it for dogs or animals, I guess, the question becomes, where do we draw the line? And, you know, if it's a, I don't know, I don't, that's.
And I'm okay with, I suspect virtually every case you've ever had has been a dog.
Correct.
It just when you use the animal, the word "animal," it broadens it such that it might apply to a.
Yeah, but if someone had an exotic feline species or something, it did something.
There you go. See, I'm looking at county attorney. The attorney will always go for the broader language.
And we had that one that was loose in the county. Interestingly, the state statute only refers to dogs. It's our local ordinance or broadened to animals. So really, at the end of the day, whatever you all choose, I just think we should be consistent. It's either, like, the title is dangerous dog of this ordinance, but we have animal throughout, so just for clarity.
I think consistency is a good point, Sheila, I'm with you on that. I was just curious.
And I wouldn't have brought this if that was all it was, but there's really three major things that we're requesting, but I figured that this would be the time to clean up the ordinance at the same time we look at these other changes.
So the problem with the ordinance is that we're trying to use the state ordinance that defines a dangerous dog or a potentially dangerous dog as the trigger point to trigger our ordinance. When you look at the state statute, it doesn't refer to animals, it refers to dogs, and so if you're going to make it consistent, you would make ours dogs. If we want it to be animals, then we need to include the state definition for an animal, if you will, similarly in our words, we would have to do something more than just leave it that way to make it consistent and also to make it broader, as you described.
But Bobby, the state and/or the town of Raleigh just dealt with that very thing when that cobra that the guy had got out and was on a neighbor's porch, actually, and they had some pretty serious penalties for that gentleman.
Yeah, and I don't remember, I don't know the details, but I think they had some struggles trying to figure out under what set of rules and statutes they were going under. And I don't know this for a fact, but I want to say that there weren't any state laws because there was some movement to do some state laws, and whatever they did, they did under the Wake County or the Raleigh ordinance, is I believe. I'm not positive about that, but I think that's right.
And addressing that point, it's many of these statements Sheila had said, that the owner will immediately deliver to the Dare County Animal Shelter. I mean, we're not taking a cobra to the animal shelter, right? So using the word "animal" may be inappropriate, and "dog" may be the appropriate word in our ordinance.
And I'll tell you, the SPCA probably isn't going to handle exotic animals either.
Right.
When we have problems with those, you usually call in somebody who does that kind of thing.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions, Sheila?
She said there are three main points, consistency was.
Right, okay, so the dog versus animal is really kind of an administrative cleanup for consistency. So the first item I want to bring your attention to is on page 17. Make sure we're looking at the same thing. It's the highlighted sentence there at the first, bottom of the perspiri graph. "The Dangerous Animal Appeal Board may approve, revoke, or revise the level of danger as determined by the Health Director." So as county manager mentioned, we had a recent case where we were looking for some more latitude with the Dangerous Animal Appeal Board. There was an appeal, they upheld the decision that this was a potentially dangerous dog, but they would have liked to exercise some of the options available that we put in the ordinance, like Bobby mentioned, whether it's muscling or fencing instead of just euthanasia. But that needed to be clear in this ordinance because they weren't sure whether they had that authority to do that at that time of the hearing, or whether it was just flat, yes, we agree, or we uphold the Health Director's decision and her determination of disposition. Does that make sense?
Yes, and the original ordinance was intended to do the former. It was intended to simply be an appeal. Was she right or wrong? No authority given. We've had some occasions now that we've used it where.
You want to broaden the powers of the appeal board?
Well, it didn't, crime didn't fit the punishment, if you will, and so, but we didn't have any way in the ordinance to make it fit. And so that's what this does. It helps them have some discretion. So there's a tug in it, in that when it's absolute, then there's no discretion, everybody gets fed with the same spoon. You put discretion in it, now you're having to worry about did everybody get treated the same way, was there due process, were those kind of things, and you just, there's a balance there that becomes more difficult.
Shouldn't that read the Dangerous Dog Appeal Board now?
Thank you for.
There's actually quite a few of those in here.
Okay.
You might want to go through it again.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of them in there.
Okay.
I didn't want to go waste your time on all of them.
Well, we can go through and do a word sort and replace, yes, thank you. The second item is down under, it's item E, this would be in addition, it's highlighted there. "In the event the Health Director determines after having made a study of the case that the owner of the dog is either unwilling or unable to comply with any of the restrictions that may be set forth, then upon declaring the dog potentially dangerous, the Health Director shall have the authority to instruct the owner to surrender the dog to animal control for adoption, placement in a dog refuge, or disposition in accordance with the animal control policies and procedures." This, again, would provide more options if we have a case where the dog owner is not able to comply with the options, that we don't have to just automatically euthanize the dog, that we can work with animal control to determine the most appropriate disposition, which may be adoption, out to a rescue, and it may not, depending on the condition of the dog.
And your enforcement ability, I'm the owner and I'm not going to surrender the dog, so go away.
And that is the last item, which is on page 18, number four, because that's the other thing that we found, is by the modifications we made the last time to the ordinance to add these options, to have more options versus just euthanasia, if they weren't compliant with what, they had to be compliant to get the dog back, and then animal control goes and monitors their compliance. But there was nothing to do if we found they weren't in compliance, again, other than seize the dog, but then what does animal control do with the dog? So item four would allow an option there as well, that we can have some authority to do something with that.
No, I'm not surrendering the dog. You didn't hear me, Sheila.
Oh, well.
What are you going to do about it?
We would get law enforcement involved.
Okay, so there is a definite procedure for law enforcement to actually put the teeth in these.
It would be no different than if you had the dog after it hurt someone or killed another dog.
Yeah.
If you said no, then law enforcement goes and says yes.
Okay, very good.
Any other, any questions, Sheila? Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve.
It's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve the amendments, is there second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
But Sheila, why are you here? Congratulations, Community Foundation recognizing you recently, well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, the vice chairman said it about halfway.
Yeah, we are, we're going to take a five-minute break. All the meeting back to order and turn it over to the county manager, but before I do so, I failed at the beginning of the meeting to recognize the fact that all commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioner Couch, he's out of town and he's not able to be with us today. So I just want the record to reflect that. County manager?
Yes, sir. Ms. Denny dropped me a note before she left about the caregiver project. She just asked me to tell you all and to let the public know that the service they're providing is being provided without charge, it's not a for-fee service, and so.
I think it's all volunteers, and it's our building, so there's really no cost, is there, Bobby?
There's not, it's free.
But I mean, there's no real cost behind it because everyone's a volunteer.
Right.
Right.
Can we advertise that on our website?
Well, yes, I'll say yes.
It's a nonprofit.
Yeah, I'll have to talk to Dorothy, but I don't know why we couldn't.
Trying to get the word out, might be a good way to land it.
All right. That brings us to item nine on the agenda, it's Dare County Beach Nurse with the Avon Buxton Project, and the owner contract agreement is on your agenda, Dustin.
Welcome this morning, Dustin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. What I have in front of you today is the owner contractor agreement between Dare County and Great Lakes Dredge and Dock for the Buxton-Avon Project. What I'd like for you all to do this morning is to approve that owner contractor agreement and authorize the county manager to sign.
All right, before we do that, are there any questions from the board to Dustin concerning the owner contract agreement? All right, hearing none, then.
Move to approve.
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to do so, and been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
That was easy, Dustin.
Yes, sir.
Stay right there, the next one.
Stay right there.
Mr. Chairman, is the Avon Buxton Sand Fencing Contract.
Okay.
Similar to the previous item, this is the agreement between Dare County and Coastal Transplants. They're going to put some sand fencing in and beach springing in Buxton-Avon. So what I'd like for you all to do is to approve that owner contractor agreement and authorize the county manager to sign that agreement.
Okay, thank you, Dustin. Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve, seconded once again by Commissioner Tobin. Any further questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dustin.
Chairman, item 11 on the agenda, our resolutions approving financing terms for the 2.9 million for 36 months at 1.45% for vehicles and equipment, and 1.3 million for 59 months at 1.83% for public works heavy equipment, and Dave Clausen will present those to you.
Dave?
Yeah, as Bobby said, there's two different financings, the first for 2.9 million, that is what you had in this year's operating budget to finance mainly sheriff vehicles, 14 sheriff vehicles, three ambulances, and four sanitation trucks. That's over 36 months, the low bid was Truist Bank at 145. The second financing was in your capital improvements plan, and it was for all for public works equipment. I think you've seen the compactor, it also included an excavator and a bulldozer. That's over 59 months with the low bid at 183, also from Truist Bank, and I don't know if you noticed in the bid tab, there was one non-conforming bid that was a lower rate but actually resulted in a higher interest cost, so that one was rejected. So what we're asking you to do is adopt, there's two resolutions awarding each of the financings to Truist Bank and authorize the county manager and the finance staff to execute the documents.
Move to approve the resolutions.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve, is there second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Chairman, next is the 2022 classification and compensation studies. We talked a couple times in meetings, I've talked to some of you individually about some of the issues we're having with compensation and being competitive in the market and hiring and all those things. This compensation study is an effort to try to get our salary scale back on track with the market to make Dare County an attractive place to people to come and work, and we had, we sent out an RFQ, you all authorized us to do that a few months ago, we got that back, I think on February 22 or 24, and Dave and Elizabeth and I went through and reviewed those, I think there were seven responses to that RFQ. We went through those to try to determine which one would do the best job for Dare County. They all had the capability of doing it, if you read through them all, they've all done them, they've all got pretty broad experience throughout the country, and so there's no question they could all do it. So we tried to figure how are we going to narrow that down, and we looked at North Carolina experience, we looked at the timing for how long it would take them to do it, and we looked at the cost to do it. And from that, we first looked at and eliminated the Gallagher proposal. That proposal, price-wise, was way out of line, it was $360,000, and all the rest of them were down, except one, were down in the 50s, and I think there was one at 80. So it was way out of line, price-wise, and they only gave one North Carolina reference, so they had little North Carolina experience that they showed on their proposal. Next, we looked at Bolton, and they had one of their staff members that showed that had worked in North Carolina, but when they put their list of references, they didn't have any North Carolina references in their experience category, and so we took them off of the list as well. Third one was JER, they listed two North Carolina entities, but their price was out of line, too, their price was over $100,000, so it was more than double some of the other ones, and so we eliminated JER as well. Next, we looked at Piedmont, Piedmont is a COG, much like the Admiral Commission, that works out in the western part of the state. They were relatively small compared to the other organizations that we looked at. They had no, they didn't give us any time reference, they didn't tell us how long it would take, they would say whatever we ask them, or they just didn't give us any indication what. They would say whatever we ask them, or they just didn't give us any indication what that would be. We were concerned about their depth and whether they were big enough to do this as quickly as we wanted it done and the timeliness of a work product. So we moved away from them, which left Evergreen, MAG, and Baker Tilly. All of these had experience in North Carolina. MAG had the least experience of those. Most of their experience was in the Triangle, although they did do some work in Virginia Beach, which was a good thing and a positive in their favor because that's a market near to us that we might well compete with. But the other two had experience in southeast Virginia as well, and they had more North Carolina experience that was relative to us or comparable with us in the communities that they had served. And so we eliminated them and then looked at the other two. When it came down to Evergreen and Baker Tilly, it was really a difficult choice between us. And what it really came down to is our view that Evergreen's experience was more compatible with Dare County, places they had compared more favorably to us. They are places that we sometimes look to when we're comparing other things to see how we're doing. And they were about $30,000 cheaper than Baker Tilly. And so the three of us were in agreement that Evergreen was the right choice for us and would recommend them to you. We did send you all of these and certainly expect you all have looked at them. And you may disagree with our recommendation. That's fine, but that's where we came out. And so with that, I'm here, and Elizabeth's here, to answer any questions. And if not, and if you approve this, then I would ask that you authorize us to execute the contract and authorize me to execute whatever budget amendments I need to pay for this.
Okay. Any discussion with respect to the seven proposals from the board?
Bobby, I've got a question. So I know that this addresses the compensation end of it. Does it also look at the benefit and also?
It does, yes.
We can... This is a full spectrum. It does compression. It does the salary. It does the benefits. And again, our goal is to make sure that what... We at least know what it takes to make us comparable to the companies and the local governments that we compete against so that there's no incentive for our staff to run off and work somewhere else just for money or just for benefits or whatever. Now, whether we can afford to do that or not, all those are other questions, but we just need to know what the scale of our problem is.
And the other question is, does it address every position in the county?
It does.
It does. They gave us two prices, and we went with the higher rates so it would compare every single job class we had.
All 247, I think, is that right?
Two hundred and fifty-seven.
Two hundred and fifty-seven.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I came down on Evergreen as well, along with one other, but I'm perfectly comfortable. I was just curious, did anybody else notice the absence of Springstead?
That is Baker Tilly.
Yep. Well, Springstead doesn't exist. Baker Tilly bought out Springstead.
Ah. Well, that answers my question.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Pleasure of the board.
Yeah, I was under the same... Came to the same conclusion as Commissioner Ross did. But one thing I'm kind of fogging on right now, because I can't remember off the top of my head, what was the timeline on getting those studies done?
Timeline for Evergreen was five point five months, five and a half months.
Gotcha.
And that was the shortest timeline.
Right.
Not... Well, JER was five months. Next is the shortest timeline.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve Evergreen.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve the recommendation by county manager and staff to approve Evergreen. It's been seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, county manager.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have approval of the minutes from February seventeenth and February twenty-second. You have ground lease, sublease agreements, and a memorandum of lease agreements between Dare County and the Department of Administration. You have NCDOT right-of-way three-party encroachment agreement for the KOA Rodanthe, a budget amendment for emergency pumps, and a budget amendment for homeland security grant for the CCTV trailer.
Okay. Thank you, county manager.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Jim.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is your board appointments. The first one we have is the Mans Harbor Marina Commission. The terms of Paul Mann, Jeff James, and Jesse Troy Outlaw Senior expire in April, and all would like to be reappointed for another two-year term.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House and the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Dare County Transportation Advisory Board. The advisory board recommends the appointment of Stephanie Webb to fulfill their human services sector. You have applications on file for Catherine Fagan, Maggie May, Stephanie Webb, and Joe A. Wilson Harst.
Move to appoint Stephanie Webb.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner... By Vice Chairman Overman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Park and Rec Advisory Council. George Berry terms expire this month, and Kelly Harmon has resigned. The council recommends George Berry for reappointment and Thomas Floyd for the appointment to fill the term of Kelly Harmon. You have applications from John Cook, Thomas Floyd, Lorenzo Foster, Scott Garber, Scott Morton, Cindy Perry, Sherry Peel, Isaac Simonson, and Megan Viet.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Thomas Floyd to fill the term of Kelly Harmon and Cindy Perry.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by...
Second.
Commissioner Bateman, second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then your upcoming board appointments are in April, you have the Airport Authority. In May, you have the Veterans Advisory Council with one term, the Working Watermen's Commission with two terms, the Zoning Board of Adjustment for Dare County with one term. In July, you have the Pheasant Center Advisory Council with five terms, the Hatters Community Center Board with two terms, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with five terms, the Library Board for Dare with one term, the Mans Harbor Community Center Board with two terms, the Roanoke Island Community Center Board with three terms, the Rodanthe Waves Salvo Community Center Board with one term, the Transportation Advisory Board with five terms, and the Waterways Commission with four terms. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item fifteen, which is commissioner business and manager's business. I'd like to call on the vice chairman to start that off this morning, if you would. Vice chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, of course, I'd like to say thank you to our service pin recipients for their sixty-five years of service. And I tell you again, in the case of Robin, I did note that in nineteen eighty-seven, we were hiring people right out of kindergarten. That's true.
That's illegal, but I guess it was legal back then.
It must have been illegal back in eighty-seven. But do appreciate that, and our employee of the month, Jessica, really appreciate that. I want to say a special thank you to the Dare County ABC Board for proactively removing all Russian-made vodkas and products from our ABC stores. And I want to give them kudos on that. I would encourage any and all other businesses in Dare County to do the same thing. Mr. Chairman, as you know, I try generally to keep my comments to things that directly affect Dare County. But I do feel compelled to say a word or two about the global issues facing our country right now. And this can be considered opinion. And just to be clear, as a result of the chairman's remarks earlier this morning, the chairman and I did not know either was going to address this issue, so we did this independently of one another. I sent an email to Senators Tillis and Burr encouraging and pleading with them to provide Ukraine with any and all the weapons they need to defend themselves, including A-10s, fighter jets, Stingers, Javelins, and helicopters that will help them to broaden their defensive posture. The Ukrainians have shown more courage, tenacity, and fortitude than anyone in the world has been able to comprehend. They have the heart. They just need some help. Russia has never given a damn about Ukraine. The czar's used it for a playground and a breadbasket. In nineteen thirty-two and thirty-three, Stalin literally starved to death five million Ukrainians in an attempt to impose collectivism and defeat Ukrainian nationalism and sent another 50,000 Ukrainians to Siberian gulags. It was not until the fall of the Soviet Union in nineteen ninety-one that Ukraine became an independent nation once again. And yet, once again, Ukrainians are under attack by a megalomaniacal dictator intent on recreating the Soviet bloc. He is the personification of evil. And if victorious there, he will not stop. History has taught us that. This is Ukraine's seventeen seventy-six and eighteen twelve, all wrapped into one. And just as France and others came to aid us in our fight for independence, we and the rest of the world need to support Ukraine. And all we need to do... And we all need to do it as fast as possible. I would hope that we can all shout "Glory to Ukraine" and really mean it. Additionally, I feel that the United States needs to return to the energy independence we enjoyed less than two years ago. Our citizens cannot absorb indefinitely the energy costs facing us now, especially when it is not necessary. And this does affect us directly. We can produce the oil we need. We have proven that. Four-dollar gasoline and rising is ridiculous when we have the resources to prevent it. It is ludicrous to purchase it not only from Putin but from any other dictators in the world. We need someone to exercise some common sense. With God as my witness, I hope it comes soon. Thank you.
Thank you, vice chairman. Will said. Commissioner Bateman?
Yeah, I want to wish everybody to receive pins and longevity today. I think today was the day that was the most intense part of the Ozamart storm or the Ask Wednesday storm. Today was the day. If anybody has the opportunity out there in TV land or whatever and on here, you haven't read David Stick's book, you need to get it and read it. And there's a section in there that referenced my dad as being referred to as the breadman. And he was the last one to cross the Manier and exit causeway. And he had a guy in front of him by the name of Bud Quidley, who was driving the Trailway's bus. And that was a transportation for all the newspapers, transportation for all the mail. He brought the mail down here. And he was stuck on the causeway, and my dad got behind him and had a large diesel, and they pushed him across the causeway. And of course, he got to Manier. And then they had to go the long way around and back to Lisbon City where the depot was, where they loaded up. But that was a big thing down here because their whole outer banks was completely... On the ocean side was flooded. The house that I lived on back in Kitty Hawk, we did not see the inundation on Porridge that this oceanfront saw during that storm, but it was massive. Ukraine. Vice chairman, I agree with you a hundred percent. It breaks my heart, and chairman, it breaks my heart what's happening to those folks. A young lady mentioned earlier tonight, this morning, that she had some students from their I-2. And I can just go and tell you, hardest working folks you ever seen in your whole life. This girl would come to work at nine o'clock in the morning, and she would work till nine o'clock every night. And the days that she didn't work for me, she would work at other places. The integrity that these folks have is just unbelievable. And to see this happening to them, just over greed and just pure spite and means, it really just breaks my heart, this happening. I personally, if for some reason my price of gas that I put in my car has to go up another dollar a gallon to get that person that's doing all these bad things, I don't care. I don't care. I'll sacrifice that because they don't deserve what's happening to them. So I got...
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, a little dredge update for everybody. We had some bad news this week. They do a thing called a stabilization test on the hulls. And when they did a... They were supposed to have the stabilization test done quite a while ago, and they, in fact, did have the stabilization test done on the starboard side of the hull, and it passed. For some reason, the portside wasn't done. When they did the portside, the stern section failed. So as it stands right now, it would not be ABS certified. It's not a huge deal. They're redoing the tests, rerunning the numbers. Bristol Marine is the company who's been running the numbers. They're a company out of Maine. And of course, Crowley Engineering is who hired Bristol Marine. So they're the two companies that are responsible for making sure this thing gets done and gets passed at some point. There's been some concern that it's kind of a conflict of interest because Crowley Marine's also the people that are overseeing the construction of it.
What does that mean, Jim?
Yeah, what is that?
The stabilization test? It means that if there's a hole rupture in the stern that... And it filled with water, there's a void below the engine compartment.
Yeah, but what does it mean in terms of, is this a six-month delay? Is this a six-week delay?
No. If it doesn't pass, it'll be about a three-week delay. So we're really shooting to get this thing resolved before April first because April first, as you all know, is when they were going to put the boat overboard. It's a lot easier to do this with the boat out of the water than in the water. So if we can't... If we don't have it done by then, we're probably going to let the boat sit on land for a while till we get this done. It's not a huge deal. It's not a super expensive deal. The cost will not reside with us. It will reside with them. But just so you know, there's a delay.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you were explaining technically what happened, and you didn't get finished.
Yeah, if that section of the ship were to have a through-hole puncture and that section flooded, the ship would list and possibly roll. So in order to be ABS certified, which ABS is American Bureau of Shipping, and the Coast Guard certifies it also, they would not certify a ship to go out in the ocean in that condition. So basically, they'll have to put a bulkhead in, watertight door in, separate that space into at least a couple spaces so if there's a puncture, that the volume of water that can enter is less.
Right.
They can also just build boxes, so to speak, weld in some boxes back there that keep the flotation. So they're weighing all those options. It's not a huge deal, but it's just something that I felt like you guys needed to know.
Thank you for that.
And I think we've talked a lot about Ukraine. I've got a story, too. My wife does a lot of jewelry making, and one of her friends online is a Ukrainian girl that does jewelry also. And we are receiving video from her almost on a daily basis, which is just...
Horrific.
Tear-jerking horrific stuff. And like you said, Bob, I hope Putin rots in hell.
Amen.
That's all I've got.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Tobin. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to take a moment. What you guys have said so far on Ukraine obviously moves me deeply, and I concur with much of your sentiment. My grandparents both came to this country from a small village in Ukraine, so I've got a little personal tie in there. But my point will be brief, but what would be to ask you to focus on, as I've been doing, is I watch the, and I'll just call it a blizzard of reports, from updates to maps to troop movements to humanitarian aid to evacuations to, it is truly a blizzard of media reporting. There's a question that I heard one of the more insightful analysts ask the other day that I think was very telling. And it's a question both the US, Europe, and the rest of the civilized world needs to answer. In terms of what is your strategy? Is it to manage a Ukraine taken over and absorbed by the Russians? Or is it to stop and prevent the takeover and absorption of Ukraine? Depending on the answer to that question, all of the actions, all of the declarations, all of the pounding on the table and admonitions of Putin's guilt and the righteousness of the Ukraines, watch for the actions that you see. Those actions will tell you if they're going to stop this or whether we're simply preparing to manage the transition. And I think that will be very, very telling to see whether the civilized world says enough. That's just what I had on Ukraine. I have from our Trillium Health, a letter of support that I would like to request we approve and send to the Deputy Secretary, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It is in regard to a change to the foster care management in North Carolina. Dear Deputy Secretary, Dare County is writing this letter to express our strong support for the Trillium Health Resources tailored plan, that is, the new resultant complex medical plan that Trillium will be managing, to continue to manage all health care for children, young adults, and their family members with Medicaid who are involved in the foster care system. We understand that DHHS is considering seeking legislative authority to create a separate statewide plan to serve this specific population through a competitive bid process where both standard and tailored plans may bid against each other. Standard plans being the United Health Cares and other large private healthcare provider companies. Trillium Health Resources has been and continues to be responsive to our community and especially to the needs of children involved in the foster care system. Trillium has close relationships with our DSS staff and works well with them in assuring kids receive the services and support they need that are medically necessary. In addition, Trillium has provided a dedicated DSS director, very important, for several years that our staff can call 24/7 to make things happen quickly for our youth. Dare County would be very concerned if any other health plan managed this vulnerable population in our county. We strongly support our public managed care system in North Carolina. Our relationship with Trillium Health Resources has been collaborative for many years, and we support Trillium Health Resources tailored plan in continuing to manage kids and young adults involved in the foster care system in Dare County. Sincerely, Dare County Commissioners, Dare County Chairman.
Is that a form of a motion, Commissioner?
It is.
I'll second it.
Okay, is the motion seconded by Commissioner Tobin and the Vice Chairman? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
I will be very brief in staying on the Trillium theory, theorem here. Trillium Mobile Health Clinic, we have mobile health clinics now being rolled out, and we will have a ribbon cutting. I'm looking at Vice Chairman Overman. It will be in Rodanthe Waves and Salvo on March the 29th, and I believe we will both be there. So it's quite an opportunity.
Oh, really?
See these new units rolled out, and it's pretty exciting. Again, it'll be in Rodanthe Waves and Salvo. Our audit committee, if you want to really talk excitement, edge-of-your-seat thrills, the audit committee on March 24th will meet, and the outcome will not be revealed until that meeting. Just kidding, it's fine. And lastly, I got a mailer in the mail, and again, I'll be very brief. It was a sort of public mailer from the Outer Banks Hospital. And in it, they made a very clear observation comment that I had been concerned about, and that was frankly, the absence of or lack of primary care physicians in our county.
They're losing them.
They're losing them. And I was county manager, I know you and I spoke by phone a while back on this exact topic, and it just struck me that in this mailer that was sent broadly out to everybody that's, I guess, living in Dare County, it was one of these nice colorful brochures, almost would remind me of a campaign-type mailer if they were in a political campaign. Of course, it wasn't. It's kind of a newsletter. And it's a big enough deal that they devoted a paragraph to it saying, "We understand they're short. We understand there is a lack of primary care availability. We are trying to deal with the challenges to do this." And I guess I'm simply calling out that this is kind of a big deal. Because as I look around the room, there's a lot of folks over the age of 30, especially at this desk in this dais, and we tend to have medical issues. So I'm basically saying thank you to Ronnie Sloan for the obvious recognition, the public sharing of the recognition of the problem, and whatever we can do to help, we've got to do it because this is, this is vital to our community, access to health care. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. It is very serious. I've had a number of conversations with Ronnie. There's multitudes of reasons behind physicians getting out of the business, leaving. Professional liability is one of them. It's huge, a huge, huge cost. And just here on Dare, in Dare County, and, and, and them alone getting support staff in their practice. So it's, 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 and the cost of living in Dare County. So a lot of, lot of factors driving them in different directions. So I'm hoping Ronnie's on top of it. I'm hoping he's able to get some recruiting done here soon. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've all stated, with the perils that are going on in Ukraine, my hearts and prayers go out to the Ukrainian people. Watching the, the news releases reminds me of an interview that General Eisenhower did in 1947 when they asked him, what were the three main things that won World War, that helped America win World War II? One, he said, was armament with the atomic bomb. Another mention he did was the, the invention of the mechanical army as a jeep. And number three and foremost, the will of the American people. And watching the Ukrainian people, you can see that in their eyes and in their actions. The patriotism they are promoting is something to get deep behind and help them in any way that we can possibly do that. They are a free nation, they have elections. We should be able to help them as much as we possibly can. Just because you're not a member of some organization, of a club of countries, shouldn't disclude a free nation of getting support from other free nations to help them overcome oppression from, from a totalitarian, totalitarian country. So my, my thoughts and prayers go out to them and beg, as Commissioner Overman said, from our governments in, in the United States here, to help them. They said they didn't need a bus ride, they needed ammunition. And it's pretty bad when you've got independent business owners that have purchased and donated. Just one businessman I know of purchased $2 million worth of ammunition and sent it to Ukraine. Why can't our government do that?
It's an answer to the question, Steve. Are we preparing to manage the resultant takeover? Or are we preparing to stop the takeover? Watch the actions, watch the decisions.
Exactly. I understand. But that's how I feel. Also, as we look at the events unfolding, which will be our history, we also have to look at the events that unfolded in 1965. The Selma Civil Rights March becomes Bloody Sunday. Marching for civil rights, the African-American hundreds of unarmed peaceful protesters cross the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama, and are set upon by state troopers wielding billy clothes and tear gas. Plevd and disgust in the incident helped galvanize the support in the passage of the American Voting Rights Act. That is a sad day in our history, and I wanted to recognize that as well. In our last meeting, we had a gentleman come up and, and give us some insight into the strike bass amendments that are being proposed. And the main thing about the strike bass is, and I agreed with him, is that why are we fishing and, or fishing a species when it's in spawning and in its spawning grounds while we're also trying to protect that species? Which really doesn't make a lot of sense.
It makes no sense.
So I've sat down with him, I've sat down with a lot of the other advisors in this area, and I've come up with a resolution to, that hopefully that we can adopt. And the thing about it is, it's going to be an uphill battle to do what we're trying to do here.
That, that's where I struggle. You've just defined for rational people like us, like I think everyone, that it makes no sense, but to stop something that makes no sense will be an uphill battle. I, I apologize, guys. I can't come to grips with that. That's where I
The uphill battle part of it is, is this type of recommendation, it's the process in which the marine fisheries operates in, is what I'm saying. This type of action should have been disclosed and confronted during the scoping session when they're trying to design the amendments. Now that that's already been done, it's now open to public comment, and the, the different regional advisory committees get involved with it as well. And their, and their scope is to look at the different amendments, or the different options in each amendment, and to vote on those and send those on to the Marine Fisheries Commission to where they look at what options they consider would be the best and also what the advisories think, think would be the best. It's hard at this, at this point in time to change a lot of it. That's what I'm saying, it's a difficult thing to change once it gets rolling.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with you. I'm sort of just venting out loud.
Right.
We made a rule. It's nonsensical and insane, but because we made it, we're not going to be able to change it.
Right.
It makes no sense.
Right. And so they do have the Northern Regional Advisory Committee, who meets on March 15th at 6:00 PM. We are working on getting a Zoom meeting set up at the Fisheries Commission, Fisheries, local Department of Fisheries here in Wanches, to be a part of that so that I can present these resolutions. We're also looking at different other counties all to sign on a board with it. And the Southern Regional will be held on March 16th. And then it's also the Finfish Advisory Committee will also be on the 17th of March. So with y'all's permission, County Manager, would you please read the resolution?
This is a resolution, Strike Bass Amendment Two. Whereas the North Carolina Department of Marine Fisheries is considering the Atlantic Strike Bass Amendment Two to the Fisheries Management Plan. Whereas the North Carolina Fisheries Reform Act of 1997 requires the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries prepare fishery management plans for adoption by the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission for all commercially and regulationally significant species or fisheries that comprise state marine or estuary. And whereas NC is the only state that follows fishing, that allows fishing of the striped bass species during spawning season and spawning areas during spawning season. And whereas the NC DMF date show, data shows catch and release mortality in the Roanoke River Management Area of 182,481 dead discards since 1997, while only 53,880 in the Albemarle Sound Management Area since 1997. And whereas the ASMA is 66, 667,674 acres with a six-month season that is not during the spawning season, and the RRMA is 6,420 acres with a one- to three-week season that is during and on the spawning grounds. And whereas the RRMA catch and release is March 1st through June 30th, with open harvest April 24th through 30th, and the spawning season for the striped bass is March through April. Therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners strongly recommends shifting a greater allocation of the striped bass quota to the Albemarle Sound Management Area to protect and preserve the striped bass stock, thus increasing the striped bass chances of spawning and growing the stock. This is the seventh day of March 2022.
Motion approved. Is the motion on board to, for this resolution, my Commissioner House, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded, my Commissioner Tobin. The floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. I'm trying to, I'm trying to work, read some of the wording, that's all I'm looking at. Obviously, there's an enormous Albemarle Sound Management Area, and it says the quota was cut by 81.376%. I don't know from what to what. And it finished the season at 4,546 pounds under the 2-1, while the Roanoke River area one-week season went 14,000 over quota of what amount? Do we know those numbers, Steve? I would insert them only in a matter of clarifying what that point is trying to make, that's all.
Yeah, I can get the total number of quota for four.
See, I'm trying to get, you know, you cut the quota by 81%. It went from three million, I'm making it up, 3 million pounds to 200,000. And the Roanoke went from 12,000 to 180,000 or some, I'm trying to get a scale and magnitude, that's all, so I understand.
Yeah, I can, I can get those.
Yes, I'm in favor of it, just to, okay.
Steve, I've got a question too. Did I read somewhere that they were looking at in that Roanoke area that they were going to a two-day harvest? Did I see something?
That was one of the things that was considered, that they are considering, two-day harvest or at least monitoring it every two days. Whereas, whereas what they're doing now is they're monitoring every, every week.
Okay, maybe that's what I misunderstood. I, I, when I, when I read it the first time, I thought they were saying that, that the harvest season was going to only be for two days, which would at least reduce the impact.
Right.
It's a catch and release is going to be a longer period of time.
Right. And, and it's kind of a, the way it's, the way I, I read through it, and also the way that some of the other folks that I've talked to have read through it, is that it was kind of gray here, the way it was written, was either it was going to be a two-day harvest or a monitor every two days.
Mm-hmm. Mention, okay, thank you. All right, is there any other additions or changes or requests that need to be made to the resolution prior to approval? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
There's a couple more things I'd like to add to follow up to my Chairman's comments this morning. I can't even imagine, just like I did this morning, waking up, fixing my wife and I a cup of coffee, listening to the local news, and then preparing myself for the day and coming to this board meeting, and her getting ready and going to the office, just like 40 million Ukrainians. And then tomorrow morning, I wake up and I find myself walking down First Street with the clothes on my back and a backpack. No home, no job, no nothing. If that, if that doesn't, if that doesn't wake you up, you're not a human being. You, you don't have a human bone in your body to just, I can't imagine that. It just, it, it blows my mind. And we're living in a world today that is so scary, and it's incredibly scary. And, and to, I understand the consequences of no-fly zones and all that good stuff, but God help us, this, this, this Putin is ready to start a third world war. us, this Putin is ready to start a third world war, there's no question about it. So I'm going to just reiterate my closing comments under Chairman's comments, and once again, I will make no apology whatsoever for it, is that Putin, you will burn forever in hell, you're creating for yourself and by your immoral and criminal actions. County Manager?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. One is I have a budget amendment. We received some grant money in the amount of $84,270 that we need to budget that revenue into the sheriff's budget, and so I have a budget amendment here that I need you all to authorize me to enter.
That's in the sheriff's department?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You need that in motion form?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Over the last, I guess it's been probably a year, we've been talking off and on. They even had an event here where they had a gathering with an outfit named Holtz Companies, a man named Dan Bullock, who is the president of that company. He builds dormitory-style housing, J-1 housing throughout the country, like in Branson, Missouri, and places that are resort areas that rely heavily on J-1, and he's been trying to do a project here for some time. He's talked to me a number of times, he's talked to the chairman and I several times, and we've been supportive of him doing that and said that's a good idea. We finally asked, what is it that you want? What do you, you keep talking to us about, we'll support you, but what, are you asking for money, are you asking for support? What do you want? And finally, he said, you know, he was talking about tax credits, he was talking about this, and he's talking about that. I said, well, you send me something specifically about what you're asking for us, and then I'll run it up the flag with the board and see if they're amenable to having that discussion, and if they are, we'll work out the details and figure forward. So I finally got something from him, and what he's asking for is a million five in subsidy over 10 years, and during that time, he would build roughly 192 J-1 units in Dare County to try to house that population. They'd be a combination of one- and two-bedroom units. He's been working with us, I think he's talked to some of the towns, he's talked with the Y and others, and so the question that I have for you is, you know, is that something that we would be willing to entertain, a subsidy along those lines? I've had some conversation with Dave about whether we could or how we might do that. It appears we could figure that out, we could make that happen, if it's somewhere that you all are willing to go and have that discussion. And so if you are, then I'll tell him that, yeah, we're willing to entertain that, let's get specific, let's sit down, let's get the CIP involved and talk about what it is, what the deal entails, what other obligations are there, how long are you going to be there, all those kinds of details that we don't have yet. But again, before we could get all that off the table, we needed to know, and he needed to know, whether we'd be willing to participate in a project like that.
Works out to $800 per unit per year?
Well, you know, our housing issue is so critical, that I'm not willing to take anything off the table, to be honest with you.
I mean, if they had 200 units roughly, and it was going to say, well, the county needs to underpin us or subsidize for $800 a year per unit, and we could get, you know, 400 J-1-type student, yeah, I'm wide open for that.
I agree.
Yep.
Hearing nothing to the contrary, I'm going to tell him that we're interested, that number doesn't scare us away, and let's sit down and have those conversations, and I'll get you back in the loop as we progress with those things. The other thing is, I need to have a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 read as through 1811, to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matter of Blackburn versus Dare County. I also need to talk to you about a personnel issue, and at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
We need to go into a closed session.
You need a motion?
I do.
Okay.
So moved.
Commissioner House, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross, closed session. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. We'll take, we'll do that in just a minute. First of all, I want to give our Public Information Officer an opportunity, if she has anything for us this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Woodruff. Just a couple of dates. I mentioned, you all may have seen the press release that went out, where we've established the date for the Avon and Buxton Beach Nourishment Public Meeting, where the engineer and the contractor will be on site. That's Thursday, March 24th at 5:00 p.m. in Buxton at the Pheasant Inn Center. We'll also be live streaming, because we know there are a lot of property owners and such that will not be able to be there in person, so we'll do that both ways. And we were given some tentative-type windows for the Avon and Buxton Nourishment Project. So what they've said is that for Avon, they'll start construction, or they're proposing to start Avon in early June, and then Buxton would come sometime in July, would start sometime in July, and they're saying as little as 40 days, but up to 60 days, just because of the conditions and all of the factors that are involved. So we did just get those dates. I know a lot of people have been anxious to see those. And the only other, I put at your place, the invitation for the COA ribbon cutting. So I met with Valerie from President Bagwell's office on Friday, and we're set for Friday, April 8th, at 2:00 at the new building, so that's very, very exciting.
Yep, absolutely.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dorothy. Appreciate it. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us?
Hopefully, all the siding will be on the building by that day.
Yeah, I was out there the other week, and they said it was, they were really pushing hard for that. They actually, I believe, they started moving furniture in last Wednesday, I believe, right Dustin?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Have they finished?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay. Might run over there this afternoon, see how much they've gotten done, but that's exciting. As Matt, you know, I talked to Dr. Bagwell, and, you know, we were shooting for the fall for classes. He said, there may be a strong possibility, they may have some summer sessions over there.
Cool.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
That would be.
That would be, I'd love to see that.
Yeah. So, all right, thank you all. We will adjourn for a closed session. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the County Manager.
Yes, sir. In the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session and gave the county attorney guidance and took no other action.
All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting, and I need a motion to adjourn until 5:00 p.m. on March 21st.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobin, seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.